We're over here, just don't go over there.
New chairs, new location. This weekend, okay. All right, it is six oh two. We'll call this September twelve. Village Board meetings order, start of the roll call.
Eelsworth, Goodman, Ferguson.
Yes.
Heard, here, Cotts, here, Machune.
Here.
Ratt.
Here. Uh, we do have a quorum of five to seven, so then we'll move on to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I think I might have forgotten that to start. I was, I was testing you already. You were supposed to remind me that. Okay. Just give me a minute, I'm just gonna start the zoom.
Smartphone connected. Recording in progress.
Okay. I believe we're good there. Uh, number four on the agenda, certify open meeting law requirements have been met.
A notice of a meeting and the agenda was posted in three public places and the newspapers were notified.
All right, thank you.
Motion to adopt agenda.
All right, now the number five, motion to second to adopt agenda, any comments or questions there? One, on favor of adopting agenda as written, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Ayes have it. Passes. Okay. Uh, number six, recognition of visitors as citizen input. Uh, this is, anybody from, that wants to speak on anything? Uh, if, if there's a topic that come, is coming up, the board may ask you to speak on it anyway, but if you wanna speak on anything else or want to speak on that topic or really, you're welcome to do so now.
Hi. I had one, uh.
You had a citizen?
Yes. Um, oh, boy, I'm hitting my own button here. Um, just a question about fencing. And I just literally got it before I came here, so I didn't forward on to people, but just wondering, uh, the, the neighbors fencing request, if this met the requirements and if they had a permit for it. I don't know, if you want me to pass it around, I just got it. So I had some questions about.
What's the address on it?
That seven oh nine, uh. I think I wanna say seven oh nine White. White Street.
Okay, somebody sent this to you?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll pass this over to Jared. He's our zoning administrator.
Thank you.
There has been a rash of fencing permits come, we've gotten more fencing permits in the last like three weeks than I've had the rest of the time I've been here, so.
When it looks like Digger sold up, so I would assume that the village was aware that if Digger's hotline had come through, but.
Seven, seven oh nine White Street or something like that?
South White?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Okay.
It's the little white house that just sold.
That's not your mind? Duplex.
It's the duplex.
Duplex.
Maybe it wasn't White Street, that's what they.
Yeah, that is White Street.
Is it, okay.
Yeah.
It's in the back.
Any other?
I don't know if there's a permit for that, I'll double check, I don't know if there's a permit, but it's not a property line fence and it's under the height requirement and it meets.
They just didn't know because the poles that are sticking up, like, yeah, I.
Yeah, I'll, I'll look into it, but there's probably a permit issue, but probably not a, what's actually there issue.
Anything else for correspondence? Any citizen input? Renee, you didn't have anything either?
Yeah, there is one that was in the package.
Yeah. The, it's in the letter in the packet, so, yeah. Is this the same person that had sent before?
Yeah, and I did talk to that person.
Good. Okay, we'll move on. Uh, number seven, approval minutes. Hopefully you had some time to look at these.
I did.
So that's great. Anybody have any comments or questions on minutes? Again, there's some of these that are maybe not this group, like this the plan commission. We can look at their minutes and prove them as written, but if we want them to change anything, that's gotta go back to them at some point in time.
Right.
If we would like to modify it, cause it's, that's not really our group, but.
Well, I read them, but I wasn't in the meeting, so I don't know. I can't really.
Yeah, I'm just clarifying, so that's always kind of one of those things that maybe has a little bit of confusion to it.
I make a motion that we approve all the minutes that are in the packet in block from the different committees and boards.
And I will second that.
All right, there's a motion to second, the board has a motion on the table, any comments or questions? All right, see none, all in favor of approving minutes as written, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, oppose nay? Ayes have it. Okay, on to number eight then, financial report.
I did get the last minute bills entered, and so I updated the financial as well, so the one on your packet now you're seeing is color coded. Several items to point out this month. In August, I did get the journal entry for the property tax equivalent water done, so you're gonna see that showing up. We also received the quarterly ambulance recovery charge. And the insurance premium refund journal entry was done, as well as when you turn to the next page, in the insurance category, you're gonna see that both workers' comp changed and property. And so they do an audit for the workers' comp and send an adjustment, so that's what's happening there.
It's yearly, right?
Yeah. And then the property insurance, I got that journal entry done. One of the things to note, like, you'll notice that the workers' comp for, in the general fund category, you're gonna, or general government category, you're gonna see it in all the different departments, but in particular, the general government, you'll see that it made it go over budget, and then I'm pointing out to you, that's why we have the contingency, cause we don't know what it's gonna be after they do the audit, you know, we have, we prepare for that because we know what happens every year. And then you'll notice that we had the election wages in August, and continuing on towards the bottom of the page, you're gonna see it, the squad's miscellaneous alternating expense, the one thousand nineteen dollars that was repairing one of the squads, it was the charger. It was the charger, it was the cooling fans on the charger.
To change?
Wondering if we have for any?
That depends, according to the old version, we would have already replaced it, but we're stretching those, we were replacing them more regularly than I felt comfortable with.
Are we considering something other than a charger?
Yeah, uh, we actually had originally put in a before our previous chief left, um, we'd actually ordered a charger, and, uh, we canceled the order on that, so we'll wait a year or two and buy the vehicle they wanted as opposed to another charger. We've had a lot of really bad lines with those as far as.
That was everything I had to point out, are there any other questions?
Sorry to answer your question, twenty twenty four is more currently slated.
And a related question, our charger is paid off. So.
Twenty twenty four is a new deal?
Deiterate.
Any com-
The charger, we would continue to own the charger and it would be the twenty fourteen expedition, the charger would be back up.
When you get to that many hours, cooling fans like that would be a high failure rate anyway, so.
Okay, let's stick with the budget comparison, finance report, kinda get moving on that, if anybody have any questions for Renee on that? Uh, that, that payoff amount, that five ninety three, will that stay on there, will that come off?
It will stay on there, and I'm really glad that you said that, because you'll note, when you get to the very bottom, I finally got that fixed. I finally got the.
Yeah. Not maybe to four thousand or whatever, yeah.
The five ninety three will stay on there, unless the auditors move it, but it'll stay on there for the end of the year.
Okay.
For us.
Any other questions or comments in there, otherwise we'll just be looking for a motion and second.
Motion to approve budget comparison port, port.
Second.
As.
Sorry.
Red.
A motion to second, two of those, board has it, any comments or question? All right, do roll call vote.
I need two passes.
Ferguson.
Yes.
Heard.
Yes.
Cotts.
Yes.
Machune.
Yes.
Ratt.
Yes. All right, ayes have it, all right, motion passes. Uh, we're on to approval of the bill.
So, uh, as I told you before, I have the last minute ones actually entered, I'm not telling them to you separately, they are actually entered now. I did put a line across so you could see which ones you saw originally and which ones are added as extra, so the ones in the box are extra, and then there's just two on the last page that are extra. This does include the contractor's pay request for the Keller Park Ball Field. So that's several of the items, but otherwise, I've, I've already spoke about the Dodge Charger repair from Augusta Tire and Auto. You will see, the next one that I've highlighted is twenty six six five zero, twenty six six fifty, and it's for six hundred and fifty dollars, and that is our first bill for the rate increase, the PSC charges for that. I'm sure there will be another one, I think they bill monthly, so that's the first bill we're seeing. Then you'll see there's a couple bills from strikers that are paid for by the grant, just like to point them out to you. And then you will see the several different ones that are for the Keller Park Ball Field. We also had heirs and associates for the dam inspection, the chip seal.
We'll see another one of those, that's only half.
Okay. And the chip seal for victory.
It's for liberty. It's liberty. It's liberty, not victory. It's liberty.
It is liberty.
Sorry.
And we'll see another quarter of that as well.
Yeah, and it's in your report as victory, and it needs to be changed to liberty.
Did I write it in?
But you can do victory if you'd like.
That makes sense, of course it's not victory, yeah, okay. Uh, I will fix that on mine, and, uh, and then another one I wanted to point out was the summit fire protection. So Fred Strasberg brought this bill in, it had been billed to the Lions Club, and because of the new agreement, the village is now responsible for that. And so those are the items.
Okay, any comments or questions for?
Motion to pay the bills.
Second. Motion to pay the bills, or was?
Yeah, he had made the motion. No, second, motion to second to pay the bills. Board has that motion now. Um, Renee on the, and Jared, I guess maybe on this on the Keller Park, we, we're talking about kind of an itemized list or a budget category for that, wh- where are we gonna see that?
So you'll see in the pay request, you'll see the breakdown where it's coming from versus village fund, like kind versus, um, foundation, so you'll see that in the pay request.
Okay.
And I believe Matt's here to speak on that.
Yeah.
But what we're actually gonna do from Poloris is move it into work in progress, so, um, it's just a different way of tracking it, it won't be necessarily being assigned to the park, we'll put it into work in progress, and then when it's done, we'll capitalize it.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to reiterate that.
Yeah.
So then we'll see, this is about the seventy thousand and this is what we spent so far, so.
We'll, we'll get to it in a second, but yeah.
Okay, sounds good.
That's the only thing we're putting in there, right? Though, is that the only thing we're putting in there? In the work in progress, like?
You can do work, work in progress is just a way you categorize expenses in Poloris when you're working on a McKinley, it doesn't matter what the capital project is, if you're taking multiple draws, you don't wanna put it into your operational budget, and when it's all said and done, you're gonna put it in, it's gonna be paid for out of capital, and you're gonna capitalize it. It's just a way we're gonna track it.
But you'll know what.
Yeah.
So we're tracking it in the two six six seven six right now.
Yeah, but it'll go to work in progress.
Yeah, okay. All right, anything else? Okay, all right, roll call vote, bills please.
Ferguson.
Yes.
Heard.
Yes.
Cotts.
Yes.
Machune.
Yes.
Ratt.
Yes. All right, on to number ten on the agenda is administrator report.
As we talked about, and it turns a hundred percent right, I have written victory and it's liberty, sorry for that.
But it's three force way done.
Yeah, yeah, it is, um, there was just plain and simply a mess up on Monarch's, or Foreigner, I should say, it's not Monarch. The, they bid the entire road, they brought enough material for the entire road, we marked no parking on the entire road. However, when the crew was there, they hit Randall and picked up the truck and went home. So John was very, very apologetic. We got an additional year on our warranty, uh, and our rate will obviously, uh, be carried into next year, oh, sorry. And they couldn't come back because that's the last emulsion mix, there's hot oil versus emulsion. That was the last load of emulsion the batch plant had done that year, and they've switched, and they quit doing emulsion mix, that was their last load, so they couldn't even come back tomorrow. And they sent back enough to have done it, they add the material on the truck and they send it back. Anyways, it was just pure and simply a mess up on their part, there was
Okay.
There was no ifs and or buts about it, it was just a mess up, um, so they'll be back in the spring to
Finish it.
Do the portion, um, south of Randall Road, um, but we intended to spend a little bit more money on that project and have it all on the same, anyways, it, it's just not there, but I am happy to have another year of extended warranty on the stuff we did just get. We've spent a lot of time on budget and PSC this last month, I think we're getting there on PSC, and honestly, I'm cautiously optimistic about budget, I've been fairly, um, down in the dumps on it, but honestly, I've just been nervous, but I'm cautiously optimistic right now that we're gonna, uh, we're gonna be close on it. Uh, we're still waiting on some big numbers, um, from the state, we, some of those are mid-September and some of them are in September, you know, uh, transportation aid and shared revenue, and there's, we now know, I think we're gonna, we know what our tax level is gonna be. The pieces are coming in, we're get, we've got our health insurance, we're getting closer, um, but I'm cautiously optimistic, um, I was.
Except this is not wood.
Anyways, um.
And Farner and Liberty, corrections on the report.
Yeah. Well, Monarch, Monarch is the parent company, so Mon-
Okay, that's.
Mon- Monarch is fine, but it, but it is Liberty, it is not Victory, you're a hundred percent right. Renee has been, uh, very busy helping with both of those, um, we did an updated wage study, um, stuff for the PSC, and just plain, trying to get all the journal entries, trying to get all of our insurance stuff, Renee has been very, very busy over the last month. The library, uh, I'm not gonna read it through, but they're, they're doing really well, you can see they've got some new shelves that weigh a ton, in case anybody wants to just lift those up.
That's awesome.
Yeah, uh, Memorial, uh, is getting new shelves, so we're getting new to us shelves.
Nice.
That's great.
Pretty nice rate. Um, the police department is busy as ever, I don't know if you've noticed the number of calls now than what we had this time last year, but we're, we've had over a hundred more incidents reported, and I'm not saying that we've, our police has necessarily done more or less, um, cause they have, you know, it goes back and forth, they are however tracking and documenting it really well, I don't know, um, I don't know how involved our previous chief was about, you know, yes, I'm, I'm calling a case number for this and I'm not calling a case number for that. I'm honestly hoping that some of those things, uh, Chad just took care of and didn't assign a case number, cause if so, cause if that's not the case, we've had a huge uptick in the amount of, uh, stuff our police department is taking care of, I'm hoping, just as far as when you look at numbers and comparing, uh, we had a hundred more calls in August than we had all of last year, we're, we're way up on our call volumes, so.
Not a hundred calls in August for the year.
We have, we have a hundred more in August than we had all, so when you.
From January to August total.
January to August, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we've got fifty-one cases in this past month total. But yes, I, I apologize. We've got a new off, part-time officer that has come on, uh, I think he's off probation, or not probation, he's out of field training, uh, he's got a long time up on probation, he's off of field training this, uh, week. He came to us from Augusta, he's, he's spent some time as an officer, so we're, we're pretty excited about him. Public Works has been a little bit of same old, same old, um, we've been very, very busy trying to get stuff, um, taken care of. There's obviously always more things that can be done. But we've been doing a really good job, um, and I, I just can't say enough good things about Jamie and Josh and trying to get, uh, get all the things done they're able to do. I think that's my report.
Do you recall what broke on the, um, Harvester?
Uh, we've had two different things break on the Harvester, um, we had hydraulics one time and, uh, it was electrical, but I don't remember what it was on the electrical.
Thought we had problems with a hydraulic before.
Yeah, it's, it's an old Harvester, they're not.
Right.
They're not new hydraulic pumps, but it's gets old.
Right. It's what we got.
Yep, and we're happy to have it.
Okay, any else here?
Uh, one, one other small thing, um, we used to get these approved, we talked about it last year, but I thought I would just point it out, uh, we are gonna close the parking lot for Merchant Fest again this year. I think it's, yeah, Fall Merchant Fest, I said that wrong and had to get corrected once before, but we will go ahead and close the parking lot, uh, again this year for Fall Merchant Fest, same as we've done in years past. But I think that's all I've done.
Okay, any comments for Jared? Okay. See none. Uh, committee reports. Finance and personnel, economic development, pretty much saw it on minutes, and there's some items coming up here on the agenda that we'll be, uh, looking into. Wes, so you might want to know, there is signage stuff on there that, that's coming up too, as well, out of that, uh, plan commission, same thing, we have a couple, a couple items coming up here, some zoning, redoing the zoning chapter and making it a title and doing some modifications in tabular format and, um, make it easier to read and follow, but, uh, also some other changes to some of the, the zoning there, but you'll see those coming up. Karen, did you wanna give any I don't know, side on there updates on any of the things in the.
Excel Energy came out and installed the Eagles Nest that Dick Bedward built, and so we also had quite a bit of news on it, TV thirteen covered it, TV eighteen covered it, it was in the Leader Telegram, it's in Tri-County News, and so the whole community is pretty excited about it. Excel is gonna come out one more time as soon as we get the camera and the solar panels and the radio to send the signal into the library where we can watch what's happening in the nest. So, that was a very successful project, went well.
Yep. Good job.
Thank you.
Ever had a part with that over time, you know, it's been kind of on the radar, but, uh, good job getting it over there, it'll get it up.
Yes.
Yep. So good there, all right, moving on. Unless anybody else has anything? Gina, no? Okay. Unfinished business, nothing there, so we're gonna move on to new business, thirteen A. Uh, request per village code, uh, six one five for a variance on the number of allowable dogs. I believe there is a section in the ordinance that talks about two, two dogs, um, unlike other variances there, well, there's, there are some in particular variances that will come to the board that are specifically listed in the ordinance, uh, most of the time the plan commission will, or the zoning board of appeals will, uh, see the variances, but there are some like this one that say come to the board and not, not to the zoning board of appeals, so that's why this one's coming here first.
You want me to read the paragraph?
Yes, please.
Six one five A, no person shall keep more than two dogs or more than three cats above the age of five months in an R one, R two, R three. Upon application to the board, a variance may be granted on the number of animals allowed based on such things as location of residence, proximity to neighbors, the neighbor's objection, the board shall define the duration of the variance and reserve the ru- right to revoke it if complaints arise.
Okay, so this is David and Andrea, is that right? Okay, thanks for coming in, um, there is a letter, hopefully it's on thirteen A on your iPads if you haven't had a chance to read that. But the, they're looking at purchasing Bettys, um, so it's the house right down here on, on twelve, so if you're not familiar with that, there's a sign up there and.
Hi, neighbor.
So the request is, thanks for writing a letter, that, that's helpful, but this for four dogs, right, and instead of two. Um, I did ask, um, Renee to, if there was any historical, you know, precedence on any things, uh, do you have anything?
Oh, you didn't get the.
Ah, I don't. I did, it wasn't popping up, um, maybe, maybe you just, I'll look, okay.
That's not.
So there are some dates, these go back, there's quite a few, right? Allowed for three, allowed for four at night, requested as a fenced yard and dogs are not allowed. Neighbors were in agreement with this, that was one that was approved for four dogs, with the understanding that it could be revoked if, just like Jared talked about, if there was complaints, that was approved before, that was in two thousand eight for Zach Milkie. In two thousand and nine, um, there was one for three, but there was neighbors complaints about that one. Uh, there was one for Jackson for, uh, in two thousand and nine that was approved. So there's a history of approval of, you know, looking at the, the fences and, and knowing like if, you know, I think it fits up to, um, the owners to, you know, and to keep there from being a, a problem and coming up and complaints, and I think that's anyway, from a historical standpoint, and if anybody wants this, I guess we can send that out from, I think, maybe we've seen three or all four dogs be approved, right? You know.
Just from a, from an operational standpoint, assuming you were to grant this variance, what would be the action point, where would we trigger to say, yes, we need to do a reevaluation? Cause if you have four dogs that people are taking good care of, they're obedient dogs, it's not bothering the neighbors.
I think we have to have a complaint.
Right.
Right.
Well, but my, my point is, who are we to tell somebody that, you know, if they've got good dogs, that seems like a fairly logical, uh, reasonable request, right?
Yeah.
But there's, there's gotta be a threshold, cause, you know, the neighbor can get mad at you because you did something they didn't like and complain. What's the threshold, what are we gonna do?
Multiple complaints.
Multiple complaints from the same neighbor, a multiple, uh, multiple complainants, I mean, if, if we're gonna, if we're gonna go down this road, we kinda could have a idea.
What is our nuisance? Our nuisance ordinance? We have, you know, so I, to me that would fall under the nuisance category, so if, however, considering location, their four dogs are gonna be the least of the villages' issues.
It's the naked people.
I was gonna say, their dogs, yeah. You guys would probably have like ten to every three hundred. So I would say if there's been
They roam.
If there's been the, the amount of you know, complaints, you know, with, within the ordinance, that's one thing, cause, you know, if, it's cause the dogs are loud or whatever, whatever, it would fall under that category, or obviously there's an incident, just like any other dog, if somebody gets bit or something, but other than that, I don't know why, they're small dogs too, it's, I mean.
Yeah.
They're easily controllable, well, that's something better than they can get.
Feisty. Sorry. I don't think that we need to specify a certain number of complaints, I think that we would have to look at it on an individual basis, cause maybe the complaint is that he's a killer dog and he killed a child, you know, then.
Right.
But maybe it's just like.
I just mean from my standpoint, cause if somebody calls and complains, I don't wanna sit, put that on the next board meeting that so-and-so's mad at, so we're gonna reevaluate.
It's substantial.
But if we have a couple people calling complaining, I, I guess I'm just trying to set a realistic expectation, so they have some maturity, you know, yes, we have a, we have a variance we've been given, but if, I, if my neighbor complains one time, it's cut and you guys are out of there. I, well, I guess that's kind of my point, is I want to give them some assurance that, you know, there, there's gonna be a.
Yep, I, I would hope like with any other due process with, it, it would probably fall under nuisance and, and then the police are gonna respond to that and try to address it, and there will be a known, there's a variance, and then. one of the actions would be, okay, if this is an ongoing and they're valid concerns or complaints, then you would say, well, we might have to bump you down from four to two or whatever and go with that action, but I guess if you're not ignoring your dogs, whether you think, if you're not worried about it, then I think you're probably fine, right? And and I think your problems would be probably smell, um loud barking, you know, and four dogs that bark at each other at that, you know
It's not only the people that are aware who come in and ask for permission.
Yeah, I know, I'm just just clarifying what what probably valid complaints would come from, but if there's no concern on on the owner's part, David and Andrea, then I think
All all four of them barking at the moon at four in the morning, might be might be an issue.
Well, it would be an issue for us as well.
Do we need a motion to grant?
I'll make that motion to accept the request
Approve the variance.
To, yes, thank you, to approve the variance for six point, one point five on the number of allowable dogs.
And I would I would second that, but I think that according to the ordinance, we have to give the duration of variance for as long as David and Andrea Schimmer owned the property as well as that there is, that upon complaints that we have as a board a right to revoke it and add that into that
I would amend my motion to say to add that.
Okay, that you you're gonna include that, that's included in the motion?
Assuming the the residents understand what that you
And do you wanna put any other, um there was a mention of contingencies, offense, you know, they mentioned offense, you would want, at this point
We were gonna look at putting up a fence that way.
I guess I would, so how do you want me to add all that?
So
Cause their letter says we plan to
So when you do variances, there any additional conditions that you wanna put on it and then any other other condition, well, that would be timeline and any other actions that you might wanna take with that variance?
Is the life of the dog in consideration, um or just the owner? Is as long as the owner owns it, so if these dogs pass on and they can have four dogs habitually?
I think that we should say four dogs.
You just say
It's fine, it's that you would be allowed up to four dogs.
Yep.
Okay, I that's, sometimes those are done for life of the uh dog, you know, we'll let you do it, but one of the dogs
Right, you're basically talking about a sunset.
Yeah, that when one of your dog passes, then you go to three, you're, you know, but that's, we don't have to, I'm just curious if that was, what was
I thought about it.
Do you need me to re- restate the motion?
Those are important details, so just let's just try to get it right and
So does Renee
According to that, no issues, board allowed with the understanding that, so this was in twenty eleven, Diane, Brian, or three dogs, board allowed with the understanding that if one of the dogs passes away, it cannot be replaced. So
That's all of them or just that one?
Nope, so that would go to three to two, so your variance is in place as long as the dogs were a part of your, but once, you know, so like this situation, that's, we acknowledge you have a part of your family, it's four dogs, but you know, I'd forbid, you know, one passes away soon, then then it has to be down to three and then and then down to two.
All your dogs are young.
Yes, they are.
Okay, so I
That's good for you.
The motion would say to approve the variance on the number of allowable dogs for the time, the Schweber family lives in the village and their four dogs are living.
And fence to be put up.
And assuming, yes, that the tradition of the third fence.
Timeline on the fence for, what would a timeline on a fence be okay for you? Six months?
Yeah, that should be fine, cause we were gonna look at it as soon as we moved in.
Okay. So did you say like
High wood. Yeah, because
Yeah, maybe
They don't technically close until October on their home.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So
Next June.
Next June.
Cause it's gonna be cold and winter's coming, so it's gonna be further.
Okay, so my motion would include their contingency to have the fence um up or in progress by June of twenty twenty three.
Okay, that sounds like a great motion, thank you.
And the rest of it about, you know, if you sell the house, that it doesn't go with the house, it's his next person.
Yes, I said that their family specifically, as as long as they're residents in the village.
And then there we can, it's subject to be uh revoked if there are complaints that this board would like to.
So is there a second to that motion then?
I second it.
Oh, yeah. There's a fresh second now, so the board, there's a motion, a second, the board has a motion now, is there any comments or questions on on the motion? Renee, do you wanna read it back?
Yes, please read it back.
You don't wanna read back? Anything else? All right.
Is it okay if we leave, they have far to go?
Yep, yes, thanks for coming in.
Thank you for standing there, we appreciate it.
It's nice to meet you all.
Have a good evening.
Have a good one, y'all.
All all in favor, all in favor of approving the variance, say aye.
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 Uncle's name. Right, nice having the variance passes. Okay, uh on Matt's here, we got a thirteen B pay request for Keller Park outfield, and that was the four items I think you saw on there, so Matt.
Yeah, just figured I'd give you an update, first one was two little things.
There should be a, is it now on there?
It is on there, but can you have him sign that when he's here?
Oh, cause we have it.
Thirteen B? Got it. I knew it was one of you.
And that, front page two. Thank you.
The excavator didn't listen to me and get his stuff done and pass enough, so that's I asked Renee like one hour and a half ago to add it. I I only did that, usually I don't do that, but he kinda squeezed us in and went out of his way to do stuff, so he also, it was less than what I thought, so I figured that was fair. Uh so just to give you an update of where we're at, um currently the outfield is about ninety ninety-five percent complete, the irrigation is going in right now. For the outfield. Oh, um and then that should actually be activated possibly tomorrow afternoon. Uh we did turn up the well pressure and gotta thank you from Jared on that. It was really low apparently.
Was it? Okay.
Um oh, on that note, I don't, yesterday the water fountain, there's dirt coming out of it. I filled up my cup and I took a drink and I'm like
Changed my water pressure and I gotta see what's coming out.
Something, I don't know, but there's dirt coming out of the water fountain.
Pushing from the bottom.
I don't know, uh we don't, you haven't used that much water. And then the infield is the, we've got six loads, two are on the straw. Um we have four loads that are not on the straw yet. Um which is still less than half our budget so far. Uh that was reduced in the sense that we, the material that's there is okay, it's actually really good material, it's just not what we wanted out of a finish. We wanted the more red granular finish to keep the dust down, which is also gonna go on the old field. Um I don't know if anybody's noticed, but we
I did.
Cut the, subcut the old field. Wasn't gonna do it right away, but we needed more black dirt, so I took the black dirt out of there. And then we were pushing the old lime, the limestone field infield out to be a sub base for the new coating. So the, it won't be as hard, it'll shed water better, it'll be cleaner. Not, if we drag it, it's not so dusty. And then, so I go over quickly this, I mean, you guys can see that, there's a land surveying, which was a couple times we staked out just for perimeter staking and then after its creation, we did it again. Uh so we knew that we had the right positioning. Advanced Engineering with their design fees, um from the initial, from the very initial through current. Brian Rock is the company that is set up with the village right now for the infield gravel. Um our top coating will be coming from a different company in Waupaka, it's the only place that we've found that has it. Andrew Supply, which is also, he's a teacher at the school. Trying to keep more things local, they did supply the grass seed. And some of the, uh on the page, um I guess more importantly than, I mean, I know it's important to show the schedule, you know, for the invoicing. But if you go to the third page, um I'm making three different spreadsheets and I don't know if everybody can see it yet or not, but I'm sure at some point you will. So there's one with the the Falk Creek Youth Field and it's right, it's for the village. So currently that's where like all the tallies and invoices are going. We have our, with the foundation, which is the donation stuff, level stuff. So once we start drawing out of that, we, that will be noted on here, so everybody can see what, where everything is coming from. Uh then the third page is the in-kind donations, and that's where I've been keeping track of, like even Advanced Engineering is giving us discounts. So you'll see further each invoices that gave us a discount and everything. Then you got Andrew Supply, they were able to get two hundred and fifty dollars off the seed. So all this stuff adds up, I'm just, I'm trying to do it so that you can see the total value of the construction project when we're done. And then also everybody, I mean, whether people wanna write thank yous or do whatever for our recognition purposes at the field and individually if people wanna use these companies or thank them or whatever. Uh some of the individuals that have been up and beyond some single volunteer things is just
Matt Bartow?
Yeah, me. And then the Justin Thirder's been there with his skidster and so his, like I got, I just have a rate that's assessed for that. So um that's kind of a value that he's put towards us so far as of yesterday. Some people bring like their four-wheelers and drags and stuff, so I'm just trying to keep track of that, cause otherwise someone would have to pay an excavating company, you know, more than this. But just, it's a community involvement thing too. American Materials, the donation of the concrete, uh Stone Pro with the donation of the, all the flat work, labor, forming setting, stripping. Farrell Equipment did donate all the rebar drain tile and sealer, I don't know the exact amount yet, that's why it's blank. That'll be updated as time goes on. Irrigator with their irrigation system. And then uh future stuff is, some of the stuff is not gonna show up as a, uh like the block. It's how these companies are doing the county materials. Is, we have to run it through Stone Pro's account, they're gonna set up a s- uh just a sub account like they usually do. But then once it's delivered, then it goes to their foundation and then they issue the foundation a five thousand dollar check, which then covers all but sixteen hundred dollars of the block and more. So they almost paid for all of it. So that probably won't reflect in here as in-kind, cause it was how I had to do it, it'll probably show as a payment in through the foundation. So so those are, that's just their formalities that they do, so. But that's all I got for now, uh previous to this, there were just a couple invoices for engineering and uh I think it was just the staking, the initial ser- the staking, I think.
Which are now covered.
Yep, so hopefully if things go as progressed here, we'll get the top coating in for the infields, the outfield should be done and completed, the fencing is, they have ordered the fencing. HS is doing it, I don't know, he's donating, he's reducing his rate by seventy-five hundred bucks or hours of donation. So that should, I don't know exactly his timeline to start. Uh once we do seed, I will put, we have stakes around it now, I may put a few more. I have a orange string line that I'll put some tie on some scotch caution tape, that's just kind of the guideline for the warning track that we made. And then I'll put caution tape on the top of it. It's just, and the intent is that nobody walks on it hopefully. Uh cause once, because of how, the the time of season is good right now to seed, but we do need to keep it watered, so it'll be wet. Um that's, there's a decent amount of black dirt out there, so if you, it'll get pretty muddy.
Get enough roots.
Yeah, yeah, so so that's the plan, is Friday we'll be seeding it. Then supposed to rain Saturday and we'll keep it keep it moist and hope for the 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 winter doesn't come like in a month.
It is Wisconsin.
Well, besides that, it's going well. The poles were down, but I helped Jared bring them over to the plant to keep the old ones that were there. And then, oh, thanks for helping us out here and there with the end loader, whatever, so
My problem.
We've had, we had some fill come early, so I put down some pads, but the one guy was not being very nice and he dumped it right on the road and he didn't wanna wait fifteen minutes until I got there. So I was, I pushed that one over with the skidster, but then we had to, two loads came and we needed to, we weren't ready for it yet. They came faster than I thought and I didn't wanna say no, because then if I say no, then they
Right.
So uh so now, we may have to figure out a way to, if we do the the old field, a better I don't, we're have to put our heads together and figure out where that top coating gravel stuff can go.
If we can uh pull the fence, if we can open it, link the fence, we can put it on that corner of the one parking lot and
Push it in that way.
Yeah, I don't know how hard that'll be, I have a load, but just even
Yeah.
That way we don't put ruts through everything.
Yeah, yeah, and whatever ruts are there now, we've been fixing some of them, we will touch up, I don't know if it's gonna be this fall or in the spring, it just depends on how quickly the dugouts, dugout should be started. I'm guessing next week, uh the block. And then the fencing, I'm not sure yet, it's not, I just, I wanna get it done this year, but I'm not pushing them on the schedule wise. Because of the warning track that we made, it's not gonna impede on the infield, cause we have a we're shooting for a five-foot warning track, but I made the width of my skidster bucket, cause I wasn't gonna go sideways. So it's gonna be a six-foot warning track. But otherwise, that's, it's going all right, we haven't had no had a guy complaining to me that I was taking up his golfing practice area too. I just said, well, there's two hundred and fifty kids that'll maybe have here, then you call me.
Is it you?
It's open nine mile down the road.
Yeah, that's what the irrigator guy said, he said, you can't pay ten bucks to go golf. Yeah, but then he was hitting the balls over the railroad tracks into the whoever's field is over there.
Oh, no.
Yeah, it was his driver.
The dude.
It was like Teddyball. I'm like, okay, whatever, teach their own, I guess.
I think it's not me, I'd be putting the window out in Tim's house, I'd be trying to get over there.
No, I don't know, if you guys went out there, we did have to create a swale up against that hill and then it goes around the corner. So it did make where the those, the porta potty or bathrooms back there. So there's an incline in, you know, it's, it was, it's a little more than what I thought they said they were gonna do, but I may be able to shave that a little bit less. Um with some of the black dirt that we have left, so
Are you saying there's an incline, the the bathrooms are sunk down? We're talking about the
No, so like the bathrooms, so originally the bathrooms were like this and the and the dirt kinda just went like
Right.
That, and then it went back up. So then now we filled that all the way to the fence line. But to to leave this here, we were higher than what this was. So they had to, they had to take it so that the water would come off that hill from the railroad tracks and work its way down and around.
You're talking about the kitchen bathrooms?
No, no. The porta potty.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Yeah, so it it actually worked, we had that decent rain and there was no standing water anywhere.
We did.
So
It was a good rain?
Yeah, so it, that, it, the path, it path, it worked even though I blocked half of it, cause I made a ramp for the sunlight. So I'll clean that back up and it'll be fine.
Just a question, on the foundation stuff, is the, is that kinda be done with the fundraising part for now and do they have a time where they gotta close out? Anything from the foundation?
No, it's just, it just gets transferred over, we're, I still gotta get some signatures from the two part people, Amelia and Dawn and get everything, the fund, then the funds from the foundation will get transferred into an escrow account at all title. And then basically the same format that you guys see from a draw request, we can just go to them. The same, the the only difference is that Dawn would probably be the the third signer instead of Jared as reviewing it, I guess. And then, then the funds get released from all title to directly to the contractors. And then, then the, I put it in the spreadsheet that I can give you guys once a month or whatever that we do, so
Yeah.
So that you see where, you see where funds are coming from, I guess.
Can we add my name to that title? We talked about that before on those draw requests.
All going to there?
Yeah, that way we can make sure that we're just from an accountability standpoint on our requests on that, we, I know we talked about that once before.
Yeah.
But let's, let's keep the village in the loop on those, so that we make sure we're
Yeah. That's fine.
When we go to capitalize and we wanna be able to say
To know all those values, yeah.
Yep.
That's why I was doing the in-kind stuff too, so That's why I was doing the in-kind stuff too, so.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, so once we get that finalized through All Title, they're donating that service to us, so.
That's just awesome.
And then, it's, I just, to be honest with you, since we started, I haven't had much time to go over and get the paperwork now. So, but well, it's more about getting the seed in as of right now, so we can plan it next year.
Yeah, I just, I think I was maybe more asking just to see what the timeline was and just Jared
We'll probably continue to fundraise, cause there's other entities that we can incorporate still. Um, like the batting cage scenario, we're thinking about putting that behind the current field now. Where one couple of those trees gotta come down.
Mm-hmm.
So that's probably gonna be something we have to do next year, instead of this year.
Yeah.
Just because of the, I don't know, not everybody knows, I guess, so I was able to purchase a slightly used batting cage that was bigger than what we intended. Uh, we wanted to have either a double or two singles.
Mm-hmm.
And I was able to get a triple cage, it's fifty by fifty for seven hundred dollars. So.
Wow.
Um, it's all the cables, the come-along pieces, everything, it was, um, as far as I know, it's in a huge pile in the pallet in my shop. So, I'm hoping it's all
With instructions?
No instructions. It's really like a rat's nest. It's horrible. The, and it got tipped over when I tried to take out of my truck. But, so it'll work its way this way at some point in time, when we're ready for it, but um, but that'll probably be in a different meeting, we'll figure out that size and location and whatever. Uh, but, cause talking with Jared, a couple of them bigger trees gotta come down back there anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then, uh, that, that's a, the, the other reason why we picked that spot is because, uh, and now we're not taking up any space on the two sides of the field where we were in between and by the parking lot.
Probably better be careful talking too much about this, it's not on the agenda. Um, we have a draw request, it's not necessarily
Yeah, that's true. But
Yeah, there's some, but, but we're getting more loosely and loosely related, yeah.
Well, I, I guess to the point I was getting at is that if the, the tent from Lions Club and everything else, now that leaves between the two fields wide open for that.
Okay. All right, thanks for the update related to the draw requests.
Thanks, man.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you, man.
Yeah, we'll see you later.
See ya. Anything, any other comments or questions on the draw requests, otherwise we'd just be looking for a motion and a second.
Motion.
To pay those. I think, I think there's a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Motion and second to approve, I guess, the pay request for
Yep.
Keller Park, both fields. Any other comments or questions? All right, we'll do roll call vote.
Heard.
Yes.
Yes.
Tooling.
Yes.
Rec.
Yes.
Heard. Yes.
Okay, thirteen C. I'm, somebody maybe already has seen this, well Chester has. Karen probably has, but they had that, so this just came to the plan commission a couple times, um, there was so there's old chapter two sixty-eight, which is the, the zoning chapter. Uh, the plan commission per, per ordinance, and it may be even states, I can't remember, is in charge of the zoning chapter. So the first up, if there's updates, uh, it first goes to the plan commission. Uh, they look at it, decide whether to approve it and forward it onto the board or not, or not. Um, uh, they saw it one time, uh, requested to get some updates to it and then wanted to have it come back to them again, so we had a first public hearing, was the first time, and then we had a se- second public hearing again with that. Um, but the, this has been through the plan commission twice. Uh, so, you'll see, uh, I guess when I was doing some research into different zoning and what it looked like, I'd noticed Hallie had a, a, a nice format and had mentioned it to Renee and Jared and they saw the tabular format and did a really good job of, of taking that and running with that. And so you'll see there is a new, that new tabular table format is in the, in that ti- new title seventeen, so that was a significant update there. Um, let me think that, so that's lists out conditional uses, permitted uses in the one table, and the other one is deals, I, I guess with more geometrical setbacks, you know, dimensions sort of things, but there's two different tables, um, take a look at those. Most of the other sections were, I would say, tried to, you know, the other cu- text was copy paste in, you know, get it into the new format. Aside from adding twin homes and making some updates to the high-density R-one and then dealing with basements required or not. I think those were the three big updates other than the tabular formats. Hopefully the, the tabular formats were, and, and then signs too, was sort of an addition on the second, the secondary. The, the sign updates were not part of the, the first, um, time through plan commission, but the zoning board of fields had the recommendation, the special committee downtown district had some recommendation on signs and those were fed in on the second um, time through plan commissions, you'd see those as well. Um, and I think Renee left, you'd mentioned those were gonna be highlighted, right, and, yeah, right? Just the, the, the tabular entries, most of those were non-modified, hopefully, just copy paste and put into the format, but there were some just note that there were some conditional uses that were changed. Uh, we tried to, uh, as you got it into the table format, you sort of had these epiphanies like, oh, boy, that's a lot of the same stuff. You know, and so there, there was an effort to combine some things and to make some consistency on conditional uses and permitted uses. So there were some things that were permitted that were changed to conditional, to be consistent across the zones. Um, and maybe Jared can talk, give you more specifics on those ones.
Honestly, if anybody has questions, that happy?
Yeah, yeah.
The, um, the, the signs, we changed it from thirty-two square feet to fifty.
What page, what page?
Uh, I have it, it's sixteen five point four.
Sixteen five four.
Yeah.
Okay, page forty-eight.
Yep, forty-eight. Um, I just wanted to know, what was the Saint Paul sign that
Forty-six, I think, is what it was.
So then their, their sign would be approved on the fifty percent?
They actually didn't wanna wait, they've put it on, uh, they shrunk their sign.
They shrunk the sign.
They shrunk their sign, we told, I told them that this was coming.
We told them, asked them, they, we suggested they wait a mo- a couple months and, but they didn't.
Yeah, but yes, this, this would have covered
This would cover their request.
Yeah, they would, they would have been within compliance with what they previously requested with this.
That was a question, and then there was one typo, but it was on page thirteen and now the pages maybe are changed since I worked it before, but um, cause I don't see it, but it's, the last sentence was rear, it should read rear and it read, read read, and it was just a typo. Uh, it's a It was when we were defining, you know, what's the front
The corner lot.
Yeah, corner lots, calling it two front yards, we're saying that, you know, that, we were trying to say this, two front yards, that we're
Yeah.
gonna make it, and so it was just a typo, it just said so, and it was describing, so where would the rear be, and then it said it would be the read.
I see it.
You see it?
I see it.
Yeah.
I'll fix it.
Great. And that was the only two things that I had, I think it's well done. A lot of work to go through and get that retabulated and
Mm-hmm.
and all those little definition change, I thought you guys did a good job.
Yes, they did a, excellent job.
Uh, table, the thing, tabular form, where we're writing paragraphs to say, it's allowed here and you can make a table and put on X, it's either allowed or it's conditioned, I mean it made it so much more user-friendly.
Yeah, just
You did a good idea.
So much more user-friendly.
Um, I will point out, I think, I don't know what the bill was when they did this redoing ordinances, probably fifteen years ago. I think it was thirty thousand dollars plus or so. And we've gotten quotes to just redo our comprehensive plan at ten to fifteen thousand dollars, so there's quite a bit of
Update, not to redo, update.
Update, yeah, so.
The attorney's, on the attorney side of things, what?
Just to go back and update, yeah, reformat and, and you could, if you're gonna do significant changes, yeah, I guess, no, not, not attorney fees, just authoring fees. Yeah, yeah, so it's, anyway, kudos to the staff, I think they're, in the end, will save thousands of dollars doing some of this effort and, yeah.
His brain.
Yeah.
And your person, so I see kind of the tabular, yeah.
So I just wanna point that out, whereas we're going through this and making it more readable and more friendly, it's something we would have had to pay somebody many thousands of dollars to do.
And it can be posted.
Yeah. Um, yeah, so I think I tried to cover everything else from memory and hopefully I was, is there anything I missed on that?
No, I, you did a good job, I'm sorry. The big thing were the basements, because that was a big deal for this village for a long time. Basement requirement is gone, and then the twin homes, making sure that it's understood that twin homes are different than like a duplex, they're owned by two different people.
Exactly.
And they have to have, you know, being, you know, like when you're gonna replace your roof, they have to, anyway, that's all written in there, it's all done really well.
Yep, and you can see the other Cs, um, if it's red and underlined in the table, it's been changed from what it was before. It was either missing or just not consistent. So you'll see like the rest homes and nursing homes became conditionally used in certain zones, right, that were
It was just plain missing unless it's been struck, if you see it struck and then added, if it's like R-two-T-H, you see the Cs everywhere. Those were just plain added, whereas you can see
I got elderly housing.
Elderly housing, where we, yeah.
Change it from P to C.
Yeah.
Yeah. Again, seeing it in the table lets you see the gaps in the zones and Okay. I think we did good on that. Um, this was uh, was that in here, two of the signs, besides the square footage on, let's say, schools, our churches and residential? There were updates for projecting signs?
Projecting and temporary signs.
Projecting and temporary signs, so when we had the special downtown district, signs have been kind of a thing and um, we've, we've had an ordinance that said you couldn't project the sign out in our street. The state obviously has its own rules, right?
That was the state that had that?
Yeah.
Or was that us?
But if it was county, it was state has rules, but we also had rules that said you couldn't project.
Got it.
We, that's being removed, um, but limited to four feet.
And then I thought it was very appropriate to put in there that the state rules were not in charge of enforcing that, we just backing out, that somebody, that's their problem.
Yep, it is.
Yep.
We've gotten more crap.
Yep.
We have gotten more complaints about that, that we have no control over.
We have no control, just let them go complain.
Yeah, just let them know that, that they may be compliant or not compliant, and it's up to them, but just provide the information. Okay, any other questions or comments there? If not, we'll just be looking for the, uh, approve the first reading, it will come back again, we'll have another second reading. Anybody can come.
Make a motion that we approve the first reading of the amendment to the zoning ordinance, repeal chapter two sixty-eight zoning and amend and recreate this title seventeen zoning.
With the minor modifications that you brought up.
Right, just with the read to rear and then no, that was it, that was just one.
So there's a motion, do we have a second on that one?
Yeah, well, sure.
All right, motion and second to approve the first reading of title seventeen zoning board? Yep, the board, has the motion, no, any other comments, questions?
The only comment I would, would make is that instead of just throwing the baby out with the bathwater on basements, I wish we had offered some kind of protection to certain areas in town. Um, like new construction, for example. Um, if we didn't have bas- basements, who would care? But if you have, uh, an area, I'm trying to think of an area we have right now, maybe we don't have any left, where where you have like s- uh, six or eight houses and you've got a ninth open lot. And they all had to put in basements, and now we've changed it so this ninth uh, then doesn't have to put in a basement, like, uh, maybe Crystal Creek, for example. Yeah, a good example, and so, instead of just uh, throwing everything out and saying, ah, free-for-all, no basements, uh, maybe some limited targeting of, does, does that make, I, I don't know that I'm making sense.
The purpose, Matt, would be what, to, just because the other people in Crystal Creek can't have it, and just because
It's a two, uh, maybe, maybe not my generation. But certainly to, for, for example, Karen Strasberg, and one of the reasons she was adamant about it is property values. If I, if I have a basement and there's six of us that have a basement and the seventh house over here, well, we no basement, there, there certainly is a, there certainly is a property value, uh, component to it.
But if you're gonna make a change at some point, you have to actually make the change.
You got it, you're online.
Well, like I said, like I said
You want a basement?
I'm, I'm, I'm for floating, you, you know, uh, non-basement houses, but, but, uh, Emma, are we, are we just
Hey, I appreciate the comment, I guess, too, I understand where you're coming from.
Yeah, it's just a comment.
Yeah.
I, I'm not against what we have.
Yeah, and can you, are there ways to do that? Sure, um, from, I don't remember where it is, and I can try and find the articles, but those things like that that get put in, they'll just say your zoning's broken, it was what they say, you have bad zoning. Because if you start doing these island zoning things and you're just not being consistent. And, so it's, the, places will do it, but they just say it really starts to trend that, yeah, you, you, you would rather not do that with, with zoning, right? Where you're trying to make specific areas different.
Yes.
In what, so, um, but yeah, I, I can understand there might be concerns there on, in certain areas. Uh, Crystal Creek probably being the one.
Probably the only one we have left at this point.
Probably.
Who knows, maybe it'll make it more attractive for somebody to build it, because now they don't have to have fees, right? They can, they can put in something without.
Yeah, and I think it was noteworthy too, that we could not find another municipality that required basements.
But stretched that, right.
Yeah. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, anything other comments on this first reading? All right, we don't need a roll call on first reading, all in favor of this first reading being approved, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay, ayes have it. Thanks again for all the work on that. Uh, reading of amendments to ordinance related to health and sanitation, uh, repealing chapter one twenty-five outdoor burning, one forty-eight health sanitation, one sixty-one, John, you want to do four nuisance, two twenty-three garbage and so forth. And then combining them all to title seven health and sanitation. Again, there's a lot more that happened here, um, with this, but it was a good opportunity to take sections and reformat them. Um, what did come out of that special committee for downtown district was we, if you'll see it in the minutes, there were a couple, there was a breakdowns and assignments for peo- for that committees, that subcommittee to do some research, and one of them was on trash cans and ordinances and how O'Clare Health Department had guidelines for, you know, trash cans and, yeah. That all kinda fed into, hey, there's probably some updates we can do for, where you can put trash cans and, and so forth.
Does that change any of our, cause I don't even see where did it change location of ours or anything like that?
Says you can't store them in your front yard, that you have to pull them in off the public right away with
Oh, we're in our, okay.
So, you can't leave them on the sidewalk indefinitely.
This red isn't standing out to me as much as okay, gotcha.
It's almost a burgundy.
It doesn't stand up that great, how many inches it does it?
It's kinda burgundy, yeah.
Have to put that lighter shade of red next time, so it pops.
So, chapter one twenty-five, for example, burning. Outdoor burning and recreating Outdoor burning and recreating it, uh, we're, um, folding it into title seven.
Yeah.
Yeah. Or can you change this? It's just re.
We're just.
Reformatting it.
Right.
The only change was really was the trash cans that you gotta bring them back out and take them.
Within twenty-four hours or something like that?
Twenty-four hours.
I always thought that's what it was.
Yeah, from the right away.
Yeah, I thought it was two till I went to write somebody a, a letter saying, hey, for village ordinance, we need to move, you need to move your, uh, trash cans. And then I went.
Oh, it, it's not.
I, I couldn't find, I couldn't find the ordinance to sign.
Yeah.
We just always did.
I made a question that we approve the first reading of the repealing chapter one twenty-five outdoor burning. Chapter one forty-eight health and sanitation, chapter one sixty-one junk dealers, chapter one eighty-four nuisances. Chapter two two three garbage and recycling, chapter two thirty-eight trees, chapter two forty, fifty-six weeds, yards and lawns. And amend and recreate them as title seven health and sanitation.
Second. Did we say twenty-four hours on the garbage can?
Yep, yes.
Can be sticky sometimes because of our garbage hauler. Because if there is a, uh, if there is a, um, what do you call it, a holiday?
I think it's twenty-four hours from when it's picked up.
When it's from when it's picked up.
Okay.
Yeah, it's when it's picked up.
Cause half the village will put theirs out on Friday when it's a Saturday.
Empty trash cans.
Is there exceptions when they don't pick up your garbage?
That has happened.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I happen to know a guy who never gets his garbage picked up.
Yeah.
Behind my building. I've called him at least seven different times. He forgot me again. He forgot me again. Now it's been two months.
You had a motion in a second.
Yes, we had a motion in a second. Any comments, questions on this first reading? Okay, all in favor of approving this first reading, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Alright, eyes have it. Bartender license applications. Okay, we have a, a stack here, um, why is it so, because chicken chasers are reopening, I guess. Okay, for chicken chasers, I'm just gonna go through these. Um, I don't, I'm gonna lump them that way. And just say these are all for chicken chasers. Just looking to see, you know, if any of that, um, that chief said anything special about. I see that he's, I don't see that there's gonna be any problem. Okay, so we have Kellen Haynes. Uh, Jenna Haynes, Kylie Aldrich. Sheridan Morrow and Matthew Knoll, all for chicken chasers. Okay. Couple here for Gizmos. Uh, chief approved on, on these two, Elia Daniels and Carol Lee. And then one here for Icaron LLC, which should be the corner store, right? Eric Coolman. Uh, and chief approved this one as well. Can I get a motion to approve? Motion is second to approve the bartender license applications. Any comments, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay? Okay, um, appointments, we have zoning board of appeals. Uh, one spot there for an alternate. Did you have somebody call? No?
No. Oh, oh, that came in and asked, uh, Vern Ming.
Vern Ming, okay.
He said, he was just wondering if anything was open. He said he was gonna contact you.
Okay, so I haven't heard from Vern Ming. I guess I will, um, maybe we can. Maybe we can do a temporary appointment. What's that? Are you, yeah.
So Vern asked to be on.
Yeah.
We put it on next month's agenda too, if you wanna talk to him first.
I'm, I'm gonna talk to Vern and see about him sitting on that. And if there's anything, I think he was looking for interest in anything else too, so. So we'll bring that back up.
Good.
And I just kept it on there too, cause I know I brought, um, the library, I believe, is gonna, will be coming up. With some appointments too. I think we're looking for somebody from the school, uh, the school representative for the library board. So we'll keep that in, that'll come up on appointments for next month again too. So we'll just keep that out there until those two are filled.
Has to be employee of the school?
I don't, I don't think there's any requirements. Joe, Joe's basically gotta say, I think he can pick somebody, doesn't have to be employee, could be a family member of school or just anybody he feels like is gonna represent the school.
Gotcha.
So I believe there's been some contact with Joe to see if he, he has any idea. Right? Okay, um, so thirteen G is moved to conveniente closed session for Wisconsin statute nineteen eighty-five. One E delivering or negotiating the purchase of public properties, investing in public funds or conducting other specified public business. Whatever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. So I'll just need a motion in a second and.
I'll make a motion to conveniente closed session for that Wisconsin state statute.
Second.
Motion second. Board has the motion there. Any comments, questions? Alright, roll call vote. And state what? And we will come back into open session when we're done here, so.
Yes.
Yes.
Rap.
Yes.
Kirbyson?
Yes.
Heard.
Yes.
Okay, seven nineteen, moving into closed session. Back in. Okay, it is seven forty-three. We're coming, we just came out of closed session, back into open session. I think we're gonna move down to fourteen A, consider purchase and sale agreement. Real estate option agreement and developer, development agreement.
I'll make the motion to approve the purchase and sale agreement, real estate option agreement and develop, development, uh, agreement. Per, um, discussed in closed session.
Okay.
Now, second.
Yeah, motion second. Anybody else have any comments or questions on that?
Do we wanna add, uh, add that piece to it as discussed, the? Oh, you got it.
Yeah.
Including the amount.
Yeah.
That wasn't clear.
Alright, we'll do roll call vote.
Rap.
Yes.
Kirbyson.
Yes.
Heard.
Yes.
Cos.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Alright, motion passes. On to fifteen, possible assignment to committee A broadband research and funding opportunities. Um, so we had Dean Mishki, yeah, was in here talking before. Um, I think, nothing imminent yet, but we said that we would get to committee for, for him and work on. Um, Karen had, uh, expressed some interest in that. I, I called Karen and said, I think it, it, it seems right. In the finance and personnel and economic, economic development, just cause we might be putting money to it too. And we're looking to develop the community and broadband would be a big part of that. I did tell her, you know, I, um, understood her desire to help and she could still do that. It's just, I think I wanna, I don't wanna do assignments per individuals we need to do.
Have you done a lot of work on it already?
I've done a ton of it.
Yeah.
I've done a huge amount of it.
We'll still leverage all that. It just, again, I don't wanna get in the habit of, yeah, I don't wanna get in the habit of signing to individuals.
Put in all the input, so I've met with Dean already for two hours and so, I mean, I'm deep into it.
Yeah, let's not reinvent the wheel.
Yeah, so I'm just.
It is complicated.
Assigning it to the finance and personnel and economic development committee, but just like Karen, we, we still would be leveraging all, she knows it, so. I think there was some lack of clarity. I just wanted to go back to the board. So is the board okay with that?
Yep.
Assignment, okay. Alright, and that's it. So at that point, we're adjourned. Thank you very much.